So, Mr., last name again, Jen?
Jen.
Jen, okay, Mr. Jen. Why are you running for school board and why should people vote for you?
Yeah. I've lived the promise of public education and so my motivation stems from my desire to make sure that our schools now, Petaluma City Schools, keeps those same promises to our students today. I'm a son of immigrants from China and my parents, when they came over to the US, they had to completely change their own aspirations and they changed their own professional aspirations to what their children's possibilities could be in a new country where they didn't know the language, didn't have the social capital to move around, none of that. And they really relied on public education to open doors of opportunities for their children. And that's what happened. My siblings and I all went to public schools growing up in central California. We all ended up graduating from public universities in California and we're all doing well right now. And that's really the promise of what public education is about. And so my motivation is to make sure that we keep that promise to today's students. Why people should vote for me? I've lived the career of public service and this is part of that same story, that same immigrant story that I was just telling you. My parents before they came to the US had aspired to be public servants in China. My dad was studying to be a lawyer. My mother was a kindergarten teacher. But then the communist revolution happened and they had to flee. They were essentially forced to leave the country. And they came to the US at a time when there was amazing suspicion against Chinese immigrants, which is during the Red Scare and McCarthyism. And but they instilled in their children this duty of public service, that you have to give back to your communities and do what you can to make them stronger. And so that's guided my entire career. I've worked in public service my entire career. I started out as a civil engineer for the federal government. I was in the Peace Corps, served in Kenya for two years. I worked for the Air Force in Los Angeles and I worked at the Environmental Protection Agency in San Francisco and San Diego. And then along the way, I went back to school, got a graduate degree in public administration and then ultimately a PhD in public policy. So now I'm a professor at San Francisco State University, where I train the next generation of public servants and I teach in an EDD program where I train the next leaders of schools and school systems. And so being on the board really is a part of who I am as a public servant. I think about these things every day as part of my day job. And I think I have a lot to contribute to the board from that broad perspective. I get to see in my day job how school districts are doing all around the Bay Area. And I get to take those lessons and bring them to the Petaluma School Board.
Oh, great. Well, that is quite a story and it looks like you have a lot to offer.
Thanks.
So what changes would you want to bring to our school and how would you do so?
Yeah.
Petaluma High, sorry.
Oh, Petaluma High.
Yeah.
Well, the main issue that we're grappling with right now is not unique to Petaluma High, but across all of the schools in the Petaluma School District. And that is learning losses during this pandemic. And we were already grappling with this problem because we have had our instructional days reduced over the last few years due to smoke days, wildfires and power shutdowns. And we were just on or we are addressing those things now. We built in a flexible spring break so that we can make up days that are lost in the fall due to smoke or power shutdowns and those things. And we're looking into Petaluma High as well as Casa Grande, possibly bringing in power storage facilities, batteries, that will allow our secondary schools to operate off the grid during a power shutdown. So that's something specific to Petaluma High. But now we have the pandemic, which is an order of magnitude larger in terms of its impact on learning losses. And so we're grappling with that. How do we make up for the lost instructional time that students are experiencing now due to the pandemic? And so that's what we're grappling with and part of it is going to be a hybrid modality, but part of it is going to be makeup years after this pandemic has passed. So that's a big thing, I would say. Also at Petaluma High as well as Casa Grande, we're trying to work on a school climate that is more inclusive of diverse backgrounds and going beyond just tolerance of people of different races or gender or identities and really moving towards valuing students who come from all different kinds of backgrounds. You know that Petaluma High had the Jer Petaluma Instagram page and Casa Grande had a similar page going on. And there were a lot of expressed harm that students experienced at both those schools, things that shouldn't be happening at public schools, at any school. I mean, no child, no student should be experiencing those things in any circumstance. And so these aren't things that really can be legislated out because these are really acts of bias and in some case violence, you know, both physical or psychological and otherwise. Those things have to be tackled at the cultural level, not the policy level. And what that means is, you know, building a culture at your campus that really values diversity and people of all different backgrounds. And these are things that aren't going to happen overnight. It's cultural, it's going to have to take some time, but those are things that I would like to focus on.
Okay, well, great. Well, it seems like a lot of pressing issues having to do with school cancellation and the lack of learning time are kind of up in the air. But it is good to hear on my behalf, as well as the behalf of probably the majority of students at Petaluma High and high schools all around, that you are looking for active solutions to these issues instead of just sitting back and waiting from the past. So that is really great to hear, from my perspective at least. Yeah, and last but not least, what challenges do you notice at Petaluma High in general or Petaluma High Schools, hopefully particularly Petaluma High? And what strengths, if you have visited?
Yeah, 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 I have visited. And so the challenges, you know, the two big ones I just mentioned, you know, it's the learning losses and then it's the culture of inclusion and value diversity. You know, that said, you know, one thing that, one of the fun parts of being on the board is I get to go to all the school campuses and check things out. And I will say that the strength that we have at Petaluma High and in the other schools in the district is we have really dedicated and talented staff. I mean, really amazing. And we asked them to do some really challenging things. You know, when the pandemic first was called in March, we asked our faculty to turn on a dime and, you know, move into distance modality and they did. And then over the summer, we asked them again, now we need to ramp it up and not just emergency teaching, but now really thoughtful, intentional distance learning for the fall. And they did. And now we're gearing up to ask them for another change and saying, all right, now how do we go into hybrid mode so that we can, you know, nurture and support students' social and emotional development as well as their academic development at the same time? And all along the way, our staff has been amazing just in terms of being all in on the goal of, you know, supporting our students in the best way we can under these really challenging circumstances. The other strength that I really see, again, at Petaluma High but also at other schools too, is really engaged families. And I got to tell you, it might seem normal in Petaluma because I've noticed this at a lot of schools in Petaluma, but I will tell you, it's not in other districts. And so this is a real blessing that we should hold on to. And, you know, as a board member, I get to see a lot of this parent engagement at board meetings in our virtual board meetings. They've all been virtual since April. You know, we've had people, you know, families numbering in the 100 to 300 families show up at our board meetings. And lots of times they come to those meetings because they want to express the challenges that they're having or frustrations that they're having with the board. That's all good. That's what the job of the board is, is to take in that information. I don't have any problem with that kind of thing. In fact, the way that I see it is, when 300 families show up to a board meeting, we should be thankful because that is, those are 300 engaged families who are ready to do something to help with the education of our community's students. And so, you know, like I said before, I get to see how other districts operate in the Bay Area and other districts don't have that kind of engagement. And so we're really lucky. Our families are really tight, our community is tight. I really appreciate that folks, you know, generally expect that everyone is after the same thing, which is we want the best education possible for our students.
Okay, great. Well, that is really good to hear, especially from someone coming from an outsider's perspective into Petaluma High. This is the last thing, it's an optional piece. On behalf of yourself running for school board, this is a time period where you can address Petaluma High School as a whole and say anything that you would like to about your campaign and I bet your prospects for the upcoming election.
Sure. Well, I appreciate this time and I appreciate you asking, you know, to explore the board race. Petaluma is really lucky, actually, that we have a contested race. And what that means is there's more people running than there are seats available. I say that's a good thing because our community should always have choice. There's over, there's 40 school districts in Sonoma County, all of them with board seats that are vacant this election cycle. There are only two out of that 40 districts that have contested races, more people running than there are board seats. Petaluma is one of them, Santa Rosa is the other. All the rest, they either have the right number running that, you know, to match the number of seats open, or in the case of some districts, they actually don't have enough people who are stepping up to take on these open board seats. I know Old Adobe is struggling with recruiting somebody who would step up and serve on the board. And so Petaluma should count itself lucky, and I do. I don't mind running a race because it's better for our community if the community has a choice. And so I think that is a plus for us. I hope that people will check out the four candidates who are running for the board seat because this is really important for how, the direction in which our school system is going to go from here on out. You can find information on me at Sheldon2020.com and I hope that folks can support me. I was appointed to the board in April 2019 and so I've served on it for a year and a half now. I filled the vacant seat of Frank Lynch, Dr. Frank Lynch. And so it's really been a privilege for me to serve Petaluma in this capacity and I want to keep on going. I think I add something to the board by bringing a holistic view of public education in California to this board and it really lies in the field in which I work in my day job as a professor at San Francisco State. So I hope I can get your support.
Of course. Okay, well, thank you so much, Mr. Jen, for taking the time to interact with me and behalf of the entirety of Petaluma High School. And I think we all appreciate it equally. And that is it on my end. Again, can you restate your email one more time just in case people didn't catch it the first time if they would like to contact you?
My website is Sheldon2020.com and you can, there's a place where you can contact me through there. And I want to ask you, Anna, before we jump off, how has distance learning been for you so far?
Well, off the top of my head, I can tell you that distance learning has been less than status quo or less than what I would have hoped just because of the sheer, I also want to say, almost animosity of students towards the school or a little bit of frustration towards the lack of learning and productivity that teachers are putting into it sometimes and what they're going through. Right now, I know at Casa Grande, we have a numerous and insane amount of failing grades and kids who do not try or who are just not active in their school life anymore since learning has happened. So to say it's anything less than a catastrophe would be, I think, under-exaggerating it. It's pretty sad, honestly, on my end from being a student and I look forward to possible solutions, a possibly a hybrid or returning. But right now, I just know that we would need, we need to fix something if we want to go anywhere.
Right. That's good, that's good feedback for me and I really appreciate your candor on that.
Well, thank you. I definitely appreciate you asking me that question because I probably wanted to answer that question for a long time.
And now you've set up to a board member, so, you know, it's going to be taken well.
Exactly, exactly. Okay, well, thank you so much. Thank you so much. I hope you have a great rest of your day and this was a great experience for me. And yeah, you answered all my questions exactly how I hoped and this will be great. And if you want to find this broadcast up on YouTube, it's Trojan Broadcast Channel and it should be up in the next week.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a great rest of your day.
All right, take care.
You too.
No, how are you doing?
I'm doing good. I'm doing okay. You know, distance learning is taking a little bit of a toll, but we're working through it together and I think we'll address some of these questions and these questions I have for you coming up. So if you're ready, I will jump right in.
I'm ready and I would like to just begin by saying thank you to both you and to Trojan Broadcast Journalism for the opportunity to speak to your viewers.
Oh, well, thank you for partaking. So first off, why are you running for school board and why should people vote for you?
Thank you. So I'm running for school board for a number of reasons, primarily for you, for the students that I used to work with on a regular basis at Petaluma High. And, you know, I have experience in education, both as a teacher and also as a parent of a Petaluma High School student. My daughter Hazel is a freshman this year. And I've been seeing, both from the inside, the experiences of the students and then also outside as a member of the community and as a parent, that there are things that, you know, people have been calling for, for change and we haven't really seen that. And so I felt that someone with my, you know, background and understanding of how our specific school district works, I have the time and the space now to be able to offer my services to my community. And so I decided to do that, to take the plunge and give it a go. You know, it's inspired by many of the leaders that are out there, you know, especially a lot of the women politicians who have been very active in saying, you know, all of us need to think about how can we best serve our communities? And all of us are capable of doing this, of running for an office and serving our communities in that way. And so I decided this was the time for me. And the reason people should vote for me is they should vote for me if they want to see the kinds of changes that I've been proposing. So I've got a four-point platform that I've been running on. One of them is to dismantle systemic racism in our schools. So this is something our young people have really been leaning on this last year, which has been great to see. And so to do that, what we really need to do is have a clear plan with some actionable steps that can be taken and a timeline for that. And so while there's been some goodwill on our board in that vein, I think what I could bring to it is that kind of vision with a plan and a timeline. And so I feel that that is something that I could contribute. Another thing that I'm running on is to make our schools and our board more accessible to more people. And so this is something I've been hearing from a lot of parents and a lot of folks in the community that they aren't feeling heard. And this is something I heard even when I was, you know, a teacher as well. And so I would like to see our board do more to be able to make both the board more accessible but also our classes. You know, we still have a lot of students who've been telling me and telling, you know, others that they aren't feeling welcome on our campuses. And again, there are things that can be done to change that. And so I have a list of items that could be done and timelines for accomplishing those. The fourth, or excuse me, third thing that I'm running on is creating space and ensuring that our young people are equipped with the tools they need to be future leaders. And so really centering civic engagement and how do we lead as something that our students learn and do in all of our campuses, I think would be very beneficial. And on that front, one of the things I'm actually proposing is that we expand our board to include a student trustee. So this is something that has been done in other places. I know when I was in high school out in Tamalas, they did actually have a student on as part of the board. And so I feel that that would be a very important thing for us to do. And so that's one of the things I'm proposing on that one, for an example. And then the fourth point is that I am running because I feel that our schools need to really think about our central role in supporting our students and our community. As, so as we're making decisions such as, you know, how to open our schools again and how to do that safely, we really need to be thinking about our whole community and how the decisions we make are going to be impacting our community members and really centering that.
Well, that's definitely really good to hear. And I hear you talk about community and students. So I wanted to touch base a little bit more about your opinions that have to do with COVID-19 and our school and Petaluma Schools in general. So if you were to be elected to the school board, what things or programs or any type of policies or plans we'd like to implement in order to give students a better experience during distance learning during the pandemic? Or maybe not distance learning, maybe a hybrid schedule? What are your thoughts on that?
That's a great question. And so there's been a lot of talk and discussion about how do we, how do we sustain or how do we support students' mental health, really, mental and emotional health during this pandemic? And distance learning does present a fair number of challenges with that, right? Because you're not getting that face-to-face interaction. You're not getting the face-to-face interaction with your peers. And so there's been a lot of people talking about, well, how do we do that? How do we foster that with our students? And again, this is where, you know, we need to let the students lead. And so, you know, we need to be centering the student voices and how do we do that? So I would propose that we make sure that students are some of the voices that we're listening to as we're making those plans. And so I know that there is a committee that's working on how do we open back up? And there are a handful of students on that. I would like to see even greater involvement of students in that process. And then as far as the reopening goes, there's been also talk about if we go to some sort of a hybrid model, really considering which students are the ones who are going to need the most support in order to be successful. And I'm 100% behind that notion of thinking clearly about who is it that needs the most support? And maybe those are the folks that have first access to coming back. If we don't have space for everybody, really trying to think about the ones that really need it the most. But again, not ignoring the ones that are still sheltering in place, right? Really trying to think of ways that we can engage those students and give them outlets so that they are getting that social and emotional support. Does that answer the question? I know it's a little bit, it's hard to like put finites on some of these.
No, yeah, definitely, especially in the time that we're going through now. But I feel like that was as specific as we're probably going to get for a long time just because of so many unknowns. But jumping into the next question, I hear you talk about systemic racism and you're probably aware of the Just Petaluma page as well as the Just Casa Grande page. I'm not sure if that's the actual name. But looking directly at Petaluma, what changes do you want to bring to our school? And how will you do so?
Yeah, that's a great question. I actually have kind of a rough outline of some things that I was thinking that we want to do. And some of that has to do with really taking a look at all of our curriculum across the board and seeing where we can find, there's instances of our curriculum itself supporting and furthering white supremacy and where we can bring in more, a more inclusive curriculum. The other thing that we can do is we need to look at, you know, how our hiring process is set up because we do know that representation matters. So having students, students who have teachers that look like them, that come from their same background, makes a big difference in how successful those students are going to be. And so really making it a priority to, you know, forge some partnerships maybe with some of like the teacher preparation programs to really look at, you know, recruiting and retaining some of those teachers that would give us a more diverse teaching staff, but not just teachers, really looking at our administrative staffs, all of our staff across the board. In addition to that, we need to also look at things like our discipline policies and some of the other policies. Because when we're talking about systemic racism, what we're talking about is a series of policies that affect certain groups more so than others. And so really looking at all of the policies that we have in place very intentionally to see, are these policies that are going to be negatively impacting our students of color? Or are they not? And really taking a look at that. And so part of what I was proposing is that we have a commission that specifically takes that to task and really looks at that across our school district and start addressing those.
Okay, great. Well, I'm going to ask you kind of a more, I guess, per se, raw question. And when we talk about the Just Petaluma page, there's not only been allegations of racial discrepancies, whether it be, you know, just racial discrepancies, but there's also been a lot of inclusion of sexual misconduct. How, what are your thoughts on that?
So my thoughts on that are, is this is very serious and it needs to be taken seriously and it kind of hasn't in the past, you know? And that's part of the system that we've inherited, right? It's not just a white supremacist system, but it's also a male supremacy system, right? It's the patriarchal structure of how the United States is founded. And so what we really need to do is think about how is the system itself set up to perpetuate that and how do we address that? And so, you know, and what I've seen in my own experience, and I can only really talk about my own experience, is that when these kinds of things have come up, there has been a lot of kind of reluctance to really speak clearly about what is going on and about how we address these things. And, you know, there seems to be a reluctance among administrators to stand up for what is right and say, this is what needs to happen. You know, there's this hesitation, you know, that people have because they don't want to challenge people. They don't want the community to be upset or to feel offended. And we need to kind of press beyond that. We really need to be able to say what it is that we're doing to address these things and really moving forward with it. And again, same with, you know, when we talk about like, how do we address that? We really need to be thinking about how we change our culture, right? So we don't want to just be saying, well, we need to punish all these people immediately. Because punishing, does that really make the change that we want? And, you know, most of the studies that we see is that that's not how we, that's not how we get progress, right? So what we really need to do is figure out how do we change the culture? And that has to involve an education piece, right? So we can, we know the types of things that create kind of risk factors for certain people to be either perpetrators of this kind of violence or the victims of this kind of violence. And so how do we go in and take a look at that and reach out to these people and work with them to help them grow, to help them learn how to function in a way that is not resulting in these kinds of, this kind of violence, right? So really doing the work, and it is work, of trying to create a culture that is inclusive and is safe for everybody.
Okay, great. So we've covered what we think Petaluma High School needs to work on and Petaluma Schools in general, I feel like, are inclusive in this matter. But let's talk a little bit about why, what you think the strengths at Petaluma High School are. From a teacher's perspective, what do you think our strong suits are?
Oh, this is a great question. I love it. Because I think, you know, when we're, especially when we're looking at elections, there's a lot of what do we want to fix, right? But there is a lot that is strong about Petaluma. But there is a lot that is strong about Petaluma and about our schools. So um, one of the things that I know from being part of the school system is that we have the most awesome group of young people around. Um, I love our students. They are ready and willing to do the work to make the school as awesome as it can be. Um, we also have amazing teachers and teaching staff. Uh, I've been hearing from a lot of students actually who've been super impressed with how well the teachers have been doing with distance learning this semester. Uh, what a big improvement it has been and how they've been doing so much to, you know, provide engaging curriculum and really um being there for our students. And so I think that is a real strength of our, our community. And we have a really strong support of our whole community, right? So this whole community of Petaluma is really behind supporting our schools. And so these are all big assets that we have, and that's what gives me hope, right? Because all the things that we say we want to change, we can do that because we have the support of so many people.
Okay, yeah, no, no, definitely. And that's definitely a great thing to hear said out loud.
Yeah.
Uh, so I'm just going to open the floor up to you right now. And I was hoping that you could address Petaluma High School as a whole through me. Um, anything that you would like to tell them about yourself, any uh things that you would like to see for the future or are hoping to implement for the future? Just so everyone kind of gets a baseline of who you are.
So um, that's, I love this. Okay, so uh what I would like people to know is that I want to be the best school board trustee that I can be. And so to do that, I need to hear from as many people as possible. Because the more people I talk to, the more people I hear from, the better I can serve you, right? Because I'm not running for my own sake, right? I'm running for our community, for our students, for our families. And so um part of what's been really a joy in this process of running for an elected office has been interacting with voters and interacting with folks in the community. Um, it's been really wonderful to hear from so many people. And so I would like to encourage that, I really encourage that. Um, and to also, I would love to um say thank you so much and express a lot of gratitude to all of our young people. There's been so many young people who have been um very helpful to me in my campaign as far as making me a better candidate by providing feedback. But also I love the political engagement that we've been seeing with our young people. It's been really, really exciting for me. Um, I know when I was younger, um, I was always uh very excited about being engaged civically. Like I was that kid who as soon as I turned eighteen, I got registered to vote and I've voted in every election ever since. And I remember um in college being mystified by folks, you know, my peers, who didn't seem to think that their votes were all that important or that they mattered. And so it's so wonderful to see so many young people really getting involved. And so part of why I was so excited that you guys were asking all of us to come and talk to you is that um, you know, whoever gets elected this term, um, these school board positions are for four years, which means that all of the students at Petaluma High will be voters the next time, you know, that this seat that I'm running for comes up. So you can, you can watch and you can hold us accountable, right? So you, me and the other candidates all saying what it is that we're planning on doing. And then you can hold us accountable for making those changes that you want to see. That's how we make change, right? So I, I just want to encourage everybody to think about that and to think about how paying attention now and holding not only me, but whoever gets elected accountable for doing the things that we're saying that we're going to do.
Okay, great. Well, that was really great to hear from you. Um, and if any students or parents would like to reach out to you, do you have a preferred email address that you feel comfortable saying right now?
Yeah, sure. So uh my campaign email is electlinda juda at gmail dot com. So they can send emails there. Um, there is also, I have a campaign website. It's electlinda juda dot com. And so there's a form you can fill out. You can send me messages that way. So either one of those would be fantastic.
Okay, great. Well, it was really nice talking to Ms. Judah. And you can find this uh broadcast on the Trojan Broadcast Channel on YouTube the next, the following week. And I hope you have a great rest of your day and you answered all my questions amazingly. And I, I'm, I'm excited to see what comes out of this. So I, yeah, that, that's all from me.
Great. Thank you, Aiden.
Yeah, thank you. I hope.
This is, this is your senior year, right?
This is my senior. This is my last year.
Very exciting. So good luck to you with your senior year and to wherever you end up afterwards, right?
Yep, and good luck to you to, towards your election and hopefully maybe second semester, we will return back to school and we will see each other wandering the hallways.
Perfect. Sounds great.
All right. Have a great day, Ms. Judah.
You too. Bye-bye.
Um, so Mrs. Street, uh, why are you running for school board and why should people vote for you?
Okay, I'm running for school board because I think that children and teachers in that order should be the top priority in the district. And I think that having taught for as many years as I did, that I would like to to be there to be one of the people to help make children be the most important thing in the district. And I um I think children are our most important commodity and that sometimes we forget and we worry about oh, silly things like we spent a lot of money one time to buy rolling chairs and desks for all those classrooms. And they, and I never felt they were a necessity. I was teaching at the time. I just felt like that was a waste of money. And I would, and I think the decisions that a school board makes affect the children and that's the most important thing.
Okay, great. And just to clarify on that question a little or capitalize on that question a little bit, um, just probably just a little more background information about yourself. Um, as coming from a teacher's perspective, what grade did you teach? You know, what school?
Okay, I have, I taught for forty-two years.
Oh, wow.
And I taught at um, I taught all over California. And I taught in Marin County. I was, I was raised in Marin County. I taught down in Southern Cali- in um Southern Monterey County. And um, let's see, what else? What else was in your question?
Oh, no, that at all. I was just wondering a little bit more about your backstory.
Okay, I ta- I taught K through, I've taught every grade K through eight except the second grade.
Wow, so you have a lot of teaching experience behind you.
Right, and I spent twenty-six years of it at Petaluma Junior High School.
So you are local. Well, that's great to hear and I, and I bet that many people would also like to hear that. Um, just, just jumping into our second question, what changes do you want to bring to our school in particular? And if not Petaluma, Petaluma Schools in general? And how will you do so?
I don't really want to make any changes right now. I want to come in, assess the situation and see what needs to be done. And listen to people who have been in there longer, listening to what they have to say and assess and see what I think after that happens. But to say, oh, I want to change this and that, that's ridiculous because actually Petaluma City Schools does a good job.
Okay, great. And just on, as from a student's perspective, I'm kind of more of a personal question. What is your assessment of the distance learning program? And would you like to change any aspects of that if you could?
Okay, the distance learning cur- program. You mean, you guys on computers and all that?
Correct.
I think it's a pain. I think all the teachers are exhausted. I think it's hard for the kids um to really get the feeling of being with someone that, when, when they're seeing them on a screen. And I just, I I would li- I would hope that in time we'll be able to end it. But I think it has, we have to wait until the time is right so that we are not endangering anyone.
Okay, great. Um, and last but not least, uh, what challenges do you notice at Petaluma High and what strengths do you notice?
At Petaluma High School itself?
Petaluma High School or in general, if you can, if you don't have any specifics for Petaluma High School, Petaluma City Schools.
No, I think that right now that um the biggest things are the pandemic, are taking care of the students and the teachers at this time. I really have um, I really think that the teachers are doing the best they can and at the age they're coming in and work in the classroom with the students. I've heard that many of them are working with, still working with students and doing a great job. Could you repeat the question?
No, no, no problem. Please do not hesitate to ask. Um, I was just wondering what challenges do you notice at Petaluma High School or Petaluma City Schools in general, if you know specifics? And what strengths?
Okay, that, the challenges, as I said, I think are a lot of coming from the pandemic and the fact that people are at home and aren't being able to be with each other. The strengths, um, I have, over the years, met with many students from Petaluma High School because I taught a lot of them at Petaluma Junior High. So having taught them at Petaluma Junior High, um, I would see them later and I would talk to them. And I just think that Petaluma High School is doing a great job. And of course, I might be a little prejudiced. You know, my son teaches there. So.
Walter, Mr. Street.
Yeah, Mr. Sheva, it's Wayne.
Wayne, Wayne Streets.
Yes, so.
Okay, great. Okay, well, thank you for addressing that question. And finally, I'm going to open up the floor to you before we conclude this segment. Would you like to say anything on the behalf of yourself, on behalf of, of yourself, yourself and your running? Um, and you're running towards your election for the school board, um, addressing Petaluma High School in, in its entirety?
Basically, I don't have any questions because I, uh, I have only, I, even though I actually retired a year ago, July, I came back for the end of last year. And so I'm still really close to the people that are at Petaluma High. And I, I just, as I said, I think they're, the teachers are doing a good job. I think the administration is doing a good job. And you guys are too, because it's really hard being away from all of your friends, isn't it?
It definitely is.
You know, just being, if, I feel, I personally feel isolated and I honestly think that the students must feel the same way. So that's where I'm coming from right now.
Well, we do. And thank you definitely um for, for, for saying these words. I bet it will put some students at ease to know that they have someone behind them. Um, and again, thank you so much for taking the time to uh meet with me, Mrs. Street. And um if people would like to contact you, how should they do so?
Oh, they can contact me on that um email address that you have. Do you have it?
Uh, would you like to just repeat it one more time for our general audience?
C A S one zero I S at netzero dot com.
And what, what type of things will you be accepting from students? Are they able to ask you questions about your campaign?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay, great.
I'm good.
All right. Well, thank you so much for meeting with me, Mrs. Street, and I'm looking forward to hearing more about it, uh, about, about the process of you getting elected. And I hope you have a great rest of your day.
And what, what year are you?
I'm a senior, so I am leaving Petaluma High School next year.
Where are you going next year?
I'm probably going to Oregon University of Oregon or Oregon State University.
Okay, University of Oregon. I sent three students there.
Oh, really? I heard it's a great school. It's just very expensive.
Well, the re- it's because you're out of state.
Yeah.
I, I think I built a dorm there.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, because of the, the spending three children there at that cost.
Yeah, no, I heard it's a beautiful school and I heard it has a lot to offer.
They all had a wonderful time there and they all got a really good education there. So goo- good luck on getting in.
Well, thank you so much. It was a great re- meeting with you and I hope you have a spectacular rest of your day.
You too. Bye-bye.
So, uh, why are you running for school board and why should people vote for you?
Well, I'm running for reelection, as you probably know. Um, I've been on the board for four years. I'm very, very passionate about Petaluma City Schools. I, I had two kids who graduated and I have two grandchildren in, one at Petaluma Junior, one at McNear. And also, um, in the past two years, we as a, as a school board have made some um progress in certain issues. And I would like to continue to see that through. Um, progress on the issue of inclusion and diversity. Um, bringing in a, a progress on um making our curriculum Fair Act compliant. Um, I'm pushing for ethnic studies. I'm hoping that, that's one of the things. Um, also, when I first got on the board, I pushed to have more uh AP and honors classes offered. And I know that there's, there, they, they did step that up and there are more classes offered. But I'm still concerned about um what's known as a gatekeeper that keeps certain students from taking those classes. When I was an AP teacher at Tamalas High School, I took everybody. They wanted to work hard and were willing to work hard. They were in my class. I didn't test them. I didn't talk to other teachers. I took them at their word. Um, and I, it was pretty successful. So that's also really important to me. I really, really like the people that I work with, the, um, we as a board, the five of us have, um, it took a little bit, but we've really come together and we, we all have the same opinions and feelings about the way the school should be, that they should be safe and welcoming. And that's what I want to continue working on.
Okay, well, that is great to hear. And just jumping into the next question. Um, what changes do you want to bring to our school, particularly Petaluma High School? And if not, just generalized Petaluma Schools? And how will you do so?
Okay, well, the one thing, I mentioned one thing in opening up AP and honors classes. Um, I also want, I want to see the curriculum be more reflective of the students so that a student who, um, student can see themselves in their curriculum. So that it, our curriculum is as diverse as our student body. I am, we brought in a, an organization called Circle Up, which is um um, helping us work on, like what I said before, inclusivity and tolerance and diversity and equity. And I am training to be a trainer in that group. Um, and I'm very excited about that because that means I get to go to uh schools and work with students and staff on those kinds of issues. So that's basically, those are two of the biggies.
Okay, cool. Um, uh, kind of going off on a burning question that I, as well as the majority of Petaluma High School has. What are your thoughts on the coronavirus pandemic and how that is affecting Petaluma High School, Petaluma Schools? And what do you suggest, or what would you suggest our next move be as a district if you were to get reelected?
Well, and that's one of the reasons why I'm waiting for reelection is I feel like I'm in the middle of putting this all together and I want to see it through. Um, unfortunately, we're stuck in purple tier, which means that we really can't even, we can't even come back even in a hybrid mode. What we've done so far though, and I want to continue to work on that, is um the state allows us to have small cohorts, especially at the elementary level, um, for students that um have special needs, are second language learners, um, are at risk, are not doing well on Zoom. So we've started those. Um, and I, what, what I would like to see while we're still in the purple tier is um having small cohorts of special ed students, K through twelve. So not just at the elementary, but also at the secondary. And I would also like to look at ways to bring students back to campus. Um, either, you know, once a week for clubs or, you know, once a week to go to your auto shop class or your art class or have lab day in science classes. Just some way to bring kids back. Um, I know we can't do it all at once, but at least to offer that social, emotional touchstone that I know, I mean, I've talked to my own grandchildren. I know they're hankering for, that they're yearning for, that they need. Um, that's one of my biggest concerns is figuring out a way while we're in purple tier to, to, to bring kids on campus somehow. Um, in small groups, wearing masks, of course, but at least you'd be, you'd be making those connections. Once we get out of the purple tier and into the red tier, then it's full steam ahead to hybrid. There's a couple of uh landmines that the state has thrown our way. Number one, school districts are now responsible for testing and contact tracing, which I think is a, is a public health issue, not a, a school issue, but that's something we have to do. So getting all that in play so that as soon as we get out of the red, out of purple and we can move ahead, that we start bringing kids back to school.
Okay, well, great. Well, that's really good to hear, especially from my perspective, uh, being a Petaluma High School student.
What grade are you in?
I'm a senior this year, so I'm leaving next year. It's kind of a bummer. It is a bummer. But I'm just glad I get to talk to people who get to try to make the, the future seniors have a better experience than what we're experiencing.
I know. I'm so sorry. A senior year is so.
Yeah.
You guys get a prom. Maybe you'll get a prom. Maybe they'll.
We are crossing our fingers that we get some kind of social interaction as our farewell before we take, you know, our next, our next, put one foot into our adult life.
Well, and I think that, you know, probably next semester, we, I mean, Sonoma County is not going to be this restricted forever. And, you know, I would especially like to bring back seniors, eighth graders and sixth graders, because that's like, that's. graders, because that's like, that's the big year before you move on to your next step, be it junior high, high school or college. And I, I just feel awful. I, I really, really want to figure out a way to get you guys back so that you can do some of your senior year stuff.
Well, that sounds absolutely wonderful, especially from my perspective, being someone, you know, doing all my schoolwork and interacting with my friends over a computer, it's pretty terrible. So hopefully we can get something in. But, you know, um, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it or when we're able to cross that bridge.
And we're working towards it so that when, when we can cross it, we're ready.
Yes, correct, correct. Um, and then, uh, one more question for you before I open the floor up to yourself. Uh, what challenges do you notice at Petaluma High School and what strengths? And this can be generally referring to Petaluma Schools or hopefully if you have any particular insight in specific, specifically Petaluma High School.
Um, well, I'll tell you, the strengths I see are with the students. Um, every time we have students of the month or kids come and make presentations about what their school is doing, I am always so impressed. I mean, you guys are amazing, even in this time, um, of how difficult things are, I still am always impressed by things I read in the paper, by things I hear at board meetings. Um, it makes me really proud to be a part of Petaluma City Schools and mostly it's because of the students. I think they're amazing. Um, I'm also, every time, um, teachers make presentations, either they are, they want to introduce a new, um, a new, uh, class that they're offering, again, I'm always so impressed by the, the offerings that we're giving, by the willingness of teachers to listen to students and go, this is something they really want or really need, so I'm going to put the work out to make it a classroom and a class. And then they have to present it to the board and we have to approve it. I would, I've never not approved of something that a teacher's wanted to bring forward. And those are, I just, I, I think we have an amazing student body, uh, district wide and we have an incredible group of teachers. And I'm also, our classified staff is pretty darn impressive too. In fact, it's the classified staff that are, um, monitoring these special small cohorts. And to me, that's very heroic.
Oh, great. Okay, well, that's, that is really good to hear, especially from someone who's running for reelection for the board. Uh, last but not least, I, I would like to open the floor up to you to address Petaluma High School as in, as in, in, in the entirety of Petaluma High School, because they'll be seeing this, uh, recording of me and you speaking. And I'd like you to just address them, if you would like to, about anything that you feel like they should know about yourself.
Well, um, my son graduated from Petaluma High, uh, and he is now, he made it through law school and he's working and he got a great education. My daughter did a little bit of time at Petaluma High and then she transferred to Valley Oaks, but she was the, um, editor of the yearbook and she also had a great experience. Um, I value you guys, uh, I'm impressed by you. Um, I feel awful that you're not in school and I want to do everything in my power to get you back there. Um, but in the meantime, you know, we're, we have distance learning and from every, from a lot of things I've seen, I know it's really difficult for some students, but I've also seen students and teachers really rise to the occasion and make, make the best out of what we're stuck with. I mean, it's, you know, there's, a lot of it is completely out of our control and it's, um, it's uneasy because every day you read in the paper something, oh, more deaths since Sonoma County or, you know, Pfizer had to stop on their vaccine because the, what people, the side effects were too awful. So it's, it's that constant sense of, of not knowing what's happening. Um, and I just, you know, I just, I feel for you guys. I want you back in school. I want to do everything I can to get you back in school. And, um, you have a good school with great students and good, and great teachers.
Well, thank you for those kind words and it was really great to get to talk to you and ask you these questions about the upcoming election. And I'm sure a lot of people will be listening to this and taking notes. So, um, yeah, I, it was absolutely wonderful to get these questions answered. And, uh, if anyone would like to reach you or contact you, what would be the best way?
Um, well, I, I have a, um, a petaluma, um, K12 dot org address, a email address. It's Ellen, is it E dot Webster?
I think I have it on here. Is it E Webster at pet K12 dot org?
That's it. I always forget if there's a period in there somewhere. But yeah, um, as the president of the, of the school board, it is, for the past two years, it's always been my responsibility to respond to emails, um, which I really like, even when people are mad at me, it gives me a chance to communicate. So anybody who wants to email me about anything they want, I will read it and answer you. And if it's something you want done or something on the agenda, I will get it there for you.
Okay, well, great. Well, thank you so much for talking to me and I hope you have a wonderful rest of your day. And if I have any questions, I will shoot you an email.
Thank you, thank you. It was a pleasure.
You too. Okay, I will see you, um, hopefully sometime in the meantime, and I'm voting for reelection.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, it was great talking to you. Bye-bye.
Talking to you too.